Jeff Plattenberg. Are you joining us? Are you sitting up front? You're not? Can you sit next to me, Jeff? Okay, well, we are going to get started with the work session for the 2016-17 Annual Report of the Facilities Planning Advisory Council. And I believe we have with us Karen Hogan, who's the chairman, Daniel Emmanoff, the vice chairman, and Mr. Charles Hooky, Secretary of FPAC. And Mr. Plattenberg will be in the audience today.
And Howard Perlman.
Oh, and Howard Perlman. Thank you. Any other members of FPAC? And Mr. Reddy from Trainsville. Wonderful, good. Well, if you would like to go ahead, and I will take any names for questions at the end.
Well, good evening. I'd like to first say congratulations to our new superintendent and offer to meet with you at your convenience, at your interest, with or without staff, however you prefer.
Give Chris Donahue a call tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM.
So, we have an agenda layout here for you. It's just an outline of what we're going to cover tonight. And there's a list of all of our members. Many of them are already on vacation and away and otherwise engaged tonight, or they would have been here. But we thank you for renewing the people whose terms expired this year, and we are delighted that all of them wanted to continue for another three years with us. So, that was great. Our report is organized so that you can kind of dig in as much or as little as you want, drill into the subject matter that is important to you. So, in the executive summary upfront in the report, we have our charge, followed by four sort of consolidated, very important recommendations that we'll spend some time on tonight. And then, the rest of the report is organized, the rest of the executive summary has the prioritized list of all of our 15 recommendations. Then, in the main report, we start with our charge and give you our findings and our research work in each of the areas of our charge, followed by our recommendations. And most of those have an attachment in the appendix that explains in detail some of the background work. So, depending on how far you want to go, you can kind of track through the report that way. And then, the last part of the report gets into our activities, telling you about our meetings, our committee work, community outreach, and our suggestions for next year's charge. This is the charge that you gave us for this year, and you asked us to look at emerging capacity issues, to update the strategic facilities plan, which you approved in 2012, and work on the comprehensive, facilities comprehensive plan. You also asked us to take a look at the effectiveness of some of our energy savings programs, and to try to figure out how we could bring attention to getting some more bond funding. So, tonight, we're going to cover, first, the four most significant recommendations, and then, we'll go quickly through the remaining ones. This is a map from our CIP, showing the expected capacity utilization in five years for our high schools. And in the CIP, there's recognition that we need a new high school in the western part of the county, but there's no specific plans for that. So, what we're offering is some recommendations about some specificity on getting that high school going. So, the red dot indicates the Hutcheson Elementary School site, which is a 38-acre site that we think is probably the only place that we're going to be able to afford, find, and build a high school on. And it's appropriately located in the western part of the county. One of the concerns that we have about this particular map is that it shows what the school system is projecting. When we look at what the county is projecting for the number of student age population in five years, we could have maybe 3,000 more students than what our conservative estimates are for the school system. Nobody knows what the right number is, but it's just to say that this could be worse, and it's probably not going to be better in five years. So, when you look at that map, you can see that if we build a high school at the Hutcheson site, there's a ripple effect that goes from west to east across the county, where we could take care of some of those capacity issues across the middle part, all the way, in fact, to the Tyson's area. So, that would be a significant number of boundary changes, and maybe a lot of pyramid changes. So, we believe that the conversation needs to get going now. We don't want to put this off for some more years and just fiddle around with it. So, that's our point. And to that point, we make several specific recommendations about the fact that you really need to confirm the need that is stated in the CIP, and that the designated site would be Hutcheson, and that this may cause some significant boundary and pyramid changes over time, and that we need the money to be included in the 2019 bond referendum. Furthermore, the CIP needs to include a plan that says, "This is when we will get the funding, and this is when we will start doing the planning and construction of our new high school." Meanwhile, we should minimize boundary adjustments and minimize any pyramid adjustments, just to clean things up, because we don't know what impact this is going to cause. In looking at how to increase the potential for getting more bond funding, we looked at how the CIP does or does not reflect our real requirements. And we've talked about this before, that the CIP really is a spending plan that says, "Here's how we're going to take the 155 we get from the county and spend it to best meet our needs." And it doesn't anywhere say this is really what our needs are. And we think if we can quantify those needs, we have a much better argument with the county for getting additional funding. So, our recommendation is that, beginning with next year's CIP, that we really try to start quantifying our real funding needs. And we're going to talk about this a little bit more with maintenance, but it's really important with our renovation schedule, because our schools are getting older and older. The renovation backlog is increasing, and we don't see a quantification of that. So, I think that would really help us as we present our needs to the voters and to the county Board of Supervisors. In the maintenance area, we all know that maintenance dollars are really hard to come by, and they're even harder to keep them in the budget when everything else is so important. Safety on the buses is important, classroom instruction is important. Everything's real important, and maintenance can sort of get pushed aside. So, when we looked at the 21st Century Schools report, their recommendation for funding, they have percents, and so, we just took a percent of our budget and said, "That would be how many dollars that they would suggest should be spent in our school system for maintenance," in four categories. You can see that in three of the categories, we're spending very little. And in the one that looks like we're doing really, really well, which is called maintenance, we're spending actually, out of that, $167 million that's shown on the bar, 100 million of that is going to utilities, which is a $40 million bill, plus custodial staff, which is 50 million, and 12 million for safety. So, you might wonder how some of those are actually maintenance, if utility bills are really our maintenance. It looks good on the chart, but it may not be an accurate reflection of what we're really spending to maintain our facilities. We have a whole series of recommendations in the areas that are outlined on this particular slide for assessing the facility, identifying the most critical maintenance requirements, quantifying the backlog of deferred maintenance, and developing and funding resource requirements to carry out the program. So, once again, if we can quantify our requirements, we have a much better case to make with the Board of Supervisors when it comes time to talk about the budget. And it gives us something to compare to what their situation is and how they maintain county facilities. But if we just say, you know, "We need more money for maintenance," that doesn't really help our case. Our fourth recommendation, I think, is going to resonate with a number of you tonight. We think that there is an impact on facilities and transportation of all the wonderful programs, many of the wonderful programs that we provide in our schools. And as you decide whether to continue a program, or start a new one, or change, or modify, or whatever, that really, we need to look at it from a cost-benefit perspective and include the transportation and the facilities impacts as we analyze whether a program should be undertaken or continued. Therefore, we're just recommending that cost-benefit analyses be conducted on the program areas. And that would actually help you with your decision-making. The additional recommendations I'm going to go over now are the ones that are related to our charge, that were not included in those first four. And then, I'll go over the ones that are in areas that we thought were important to also look at. So, in the area of capacity issues, we know we have multiple county development centers, and population shifts are going on as these centers are developed. And what we're recommending is that we keep a very close eye on in-migration of students, that's new students coming into the system, and the moving around of students within the system, so that we know as, say, a group, an area around the silver line gets developed, and people move in there, are they just moving within the county? Are they actually new people coming in? So, we have a pretty good idea about what's going on. In the area of looking at the strategic facilities plan, I remind you that you approved that in 2012. And in that, we have a whole series of guidelines for facilities. So, we relooked at those this year and determined that they still apply their guidelines, and you wouldn't expect that they would have changed a lot. But we would recommend that, in the CIP, where there's a section on guidelines that right now says, "These are proposed guidelines," and they're a list of a few things, that actually, the guidelines that you've already put your stamp on, be included in the CIP. Then, the second part of that tasking was to look, continue working on the comprehensive facilities comprehensive plan. And we're continuing that work with staff, and we have a lot more work to do with them as we move into the future. We really want to, now that we have some new staff members in the facilities area, we have people who actually know how to look toward the future and come up with some future visions. And we want to work with them to help propose some things to you for future visions for facilities, for the school system. Then, we were tasked to look at the effectiveness of the energy programs that we're undertaking. And we looked at the synergistic contract, and the Energy Star program, and the Get to Green program. And we're suggesting that it's time that you be briefed again on the synergistic contract and the performance metrics that are part of that contract, where they're trying to help us save money and energy. Then, we're also saying that we should look at our own energy savings programs and make sure that organically saved dollars are retained for the school system, and those that are part of the synergistics effort be allocated to that contract effort. And finally, we would like to see more and more students participate in the Get to Green program, because we think that's having some great successes. An additional recommendation for increasing bond funding. We learned, and you may or may not know, that when the bonds are sold, there is a thing called the bond premium that the county gets money for. For the school bonds, when they are sold, the county retains the bond premium. And we're suggesting that it might be nice, if the school's got it, to help with their capital investment program. This recommendation, we also talked with you earlier about, and that is that the CIP has a projection for the following year's students, and the budget also projects how many students we will have the following year. And our thought is that since they go together at about the same time forward to the county, your budget and your CIP, that probably those numbers ought to be the same, or there should be an explanation of why they're different. And there's some good reasons why they may be different, like different points when the data was collected and reported. But it should be clear why those numbers are not the same. We've been working with the County Planning Commission Schools Committee with the liaisons, and Dan's been attending a lot of the meetings. We're trying to get some more of them going and scheduled with the people there, but I think that's a great progress that's being made. But we would like to see an additional item added to the work plan that deals with streamlining the zoning and review approval process that the schools go through, to allow us to have some of, be a partner with the county and a part of the county, instead of being treated like some outside developer trying to make a pile of money. And we know that other county organizations, like the Park Authority, have some privileges that we don't have. So, I think that would be an excellent topic to add to the work plan. Finally, since our first set of recommendations that we brought you in 2011, we've brought you up through last year, 54 recommendations. And next year, what we'd like to do is take some time and see what has happened with those. Some have been implemented, some are overcome by events, some are partially implemented. And then, we'd like to report back to you on the status of those, and you can determine if there's some further action that you think would be appropriate. And finally, we know you have lots of financial challenges, among other things, but we're glad that we can continue to work with you to deal with the facilities, to help make this county school system the stellar system that it is. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Thank you so much. We're always definitely impressed by the work of FPAC. And before I take questions, I did realize that I failed to recognize our other staff liaisons here, Kevin Snead and Amy Hallup are joining us tonight, our special projects administrator and director of facilities and transportation. And I know there's quite a bit in here, and there are 11 of us tonight, and we're about an hour behind. So, I am going to ask my colleagues to please keep your comments minimal. We can always have follow-ups. And before they go, I don't know if, Scott, you'd like to make comments now, or share some thoughts later on?
Real quick, great report. Shows the power of really having community input to help advise us do better, and I think we've got a lot of ideas for discussion. Real challenge to see that we're above capacity in so many of our schools, and I think we're going to have, staff is really going to have to think out of the box. I heard innovation mentioned as a word earlier tonight. We're going to really have to put our best thinking forward about how we solve some of these issues. It's clear that more and more kids are coming into Fairfax County Public Schools. It's wonderful, but it's also a real challenge, and we're going to have to figure out how we make that work in the years ahead. But great report, and thank you. Very good information.
Thank you. So, I have Janie, followed by Ryan and Illyang.
Okay, first of all, I absolutely support designating the Hutcheson site. That's the next high school site, thank you. And I think we do need to recognize that we own it. And myself and our facilities people are certainly well aware of what's going on in the Route 28 quarter, because that's part of my magisterial district. And then, of course, the Silver Line and Reston, and all the rest of it. And there is, there's nothing else that we can buy in that area. So, I fully support designating that, because we're going to need it. And some of the, some of the, some of the projects that are in the works that have not yet been approved by the Board of Supervisors, they're large, they're dense, and they're going to produce a lot, a lot of residents. I am pleased that you also are recommending that we keep track of movement within the county, so that we understand what's in migration, and what is just simply rearranging the deck chairs, because there's nothing more frustrating than having the accommodation for students in the wrong part of the county. There's not much, that is just always an ongoing challenge. Couple of questions. Well, two. One is, how much are the bond premiums? And what are the privileges that the Park Authority has? I'm curious if you can answer both of those.
Those are Kevin's questions.
I would love to know.
And I'm remiss in recognizing that Kevin and Amy have worked very closely with us throughout the year. They've been very open in sharing information and helping us understand things. And so, many of the details are locked in Kevin's head, so I would ask him if he would address that for you.
And while Kevin is coming, I also agree with you that we not make any cleanup boundary changes in the area where we're pretty sure we're going to need another high school, because when that does come online, it's going, it's going to be a challenge. And so, there is no sense in doing small tweaks here and there to only have to very painfully undo them going down. And there's going to be pressure from developers and all the rest of it, so we just need to hold tight. Okay, so, Mr. Snead, bond premium and Park Authority authority.
I think they just use, let me address the Park Authority county issue. That was a, I'm not exactly sure what the discussion was about the Park Authority. This was probably, since we, I don't know how many meetings that we had last year, 12. So, we have a lot of generalized conversations. I think this, in particular, and it isn't the Park Authority, per se, but it has to do with, some with land sharing and the construction of stormwater management, what we call MS4. It's a whole nother topic that's very complicated. As you know, the county has to partner, is partnering primarily with us for stormwater management to comply with both the EPA and the state DEQ. So, that was one of the conversations that we had. And I think that was primarily where we were focused. The bond premium is something different. So, when the county offer and offers the bonds for sale on the market, they actually receive, you know, folks want to actually have that business to sell those bonds. So, the way that I noticed this a few years ago, when Mr. Plattenberg moved the finance group that serves the bonds for design and construction, if you recall, they kept saying that we had surplus bonding, like authority to sell. But we were a little bit perplexed, because we, our assumption was we were selling 155 a year, but we weren't selling 155 a year. So, I don't know, I would have to research how much of the cash the county actually receives. So, they would sell a certain amount of our bonds, and then, they would also use some of the bond premium, so we weren't selling as many. We didn't know. It was about 180 or 93 million over a 10-year period of time, give or take. So, that's why what happens, we started to build authority, even though we thought we were spending the money, it's because it came back as cash. So, we've had these discussions for a number of years, and FPAC said, "Why don't they just sell our bonds and give us the cash that they receive?" I don't know, I can't, I'm not a finance person in that respect.
So, if I could add a little bit to that, Mr. Snead, I'm sorry for being the voice from beyond, but I know we're on a limited time schedule. But I will tell you that the county does give us the equivalent valuation of 155 their commitment to us. It's how they do it. So, it really gets into their bond financial management and those aspects. The probing questions are that, really, to be more transparent in terms of what it would be, I think, for schools, and if there are any opportunities there, as we've had through the other joint meetings that we've had. So, I'm sorry, Kevin, you gave a great example on the county stormwater management and the Park Authority, there's opportunities there as well.
That's, as a follow-up, I would, I'd like a very detailed discussion of, because I know that we've talked about whether or not we are actually getting the full amount of bond sales, and there's a bond premium, because as we will now be scheduled meetings with the Board of Supervisors about CIP budget, what have you, I think this would be an excellent topic of very detailed discussion. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have Ryan's away from the table, so Illyang, followed by Ms.
Okay, I'm going to go to slide number 11. I have a couple of questions. That's 21st Century Schools report, those numbers, we see in blue bars versus red. I remember that you said about 167, that includes, you know, 40 millions of utilities, 50 custodial, 12 millions of security, safety and security, and et cetera. That 186 on the left, does that also have those as a components?
It's a little hard to tell from their report. But one would have to ask the serious question whether a utility bill is really maintenance.
I mean, I don't disagree with you, but I'm just trying to see whether the two different color bars I see, it's an apple-to-apple comparison, or has a different components?
We'll take that and get back to you on that.
Okay. The next question is, you probably heard, you know, some of the board members, including mine, when we discussed about aging fleet of our school buses, that was the breakpoint of whether it saves, you know, money to have a new buses, dual buses then, rather than maintaining, et cetera. Looking at, looking at that, the maintenance, especially major maintenance, by not spending, by only spending that much, 23.10 versus what's been being recommended, 124, whether that gap, whether you can quantify whether that gap actually causes us more expenditures?
That's the idea of doing the facilities assessment, to go out and see what state our facility, the major systems on our facilities are, like how old are the roofs, and what is the average age that a roof can be expected to be made?
Whether that's a something, whether FPAC can take on, or that has to be from someone outside, or our staff?
Recommending that the staff undertake an assessment of their facilities.
Do you know whether, rather than actually, you know, getting, doing that, whether there's any school district or any government out there, or any entity who has done something similar that can show us how they did?
Yes. And we have members on FPAC that can work with the staff, but staff has already started doing that facility assessment. We're just saying, let's get a, get a full one and quantify what our needs.
Because, again, we've been saying for many, many years that we have not been spending enough on the preventive maintenance, major maintenance, but only if, you know, I, again, as a board member, when I go out and want to advocate, especially to our funding authority, that, you know, this much more investment is needed, but I would like to have something that I can use to show them. Analysis shows that it saves us a lot of money by investing more upfront.
Yes, sir. Karen, if you don't mind, we have a great partnership with FPAC, and Karen, the leadership and the whole group is reflected by the amount of folks that have taken time out of their schedule to be here this evening, is just something that's reflective of the partnership about these issues that are really coming to the fore. Mr. Moon, you mentioned something that is really spot-on. We have, as staff, identified from our asset management system, that we've just concluded putting together about what the lifecycle replacement of all of our maintenance, of every single one of our HVAC systems, chillers, controls, for example, et cetera. Just in energy management controls, we have over 13 different type of energy management systems, some of which are DOS-based. And that's 11 million dollars, right, 11 million dollars' worth that have exceeded their useful life. So, that's kind of a sticker shock, a magnitude of the problem. But what we've gone is by identifying through our asset tagging system, that, as I said, we just concluded doing, and putting it in a software program that our team has put together. We've identified these We've identified these total quantity amounts beyond what we had done in the Infrastructure Finance Committee when we had those conversations with them. The next step, the next logical step, and I think that's what F-PAC's recommendation is, is to get a group to come in that does this for a living, that says, okay, that's great that you have your life cycles of 20 years for roof or whatever it may be. But if you look at a replacement program that is a reasonableness, right, meets a means test, these are what the industry averages or standards are. And therefore, based upon the data that you've provided, coupled with the industry means test, this is really what you really should be looking at and give you exactly the qualitative and quantitative data that you're looking for to make the approach. We feel we've got good base data now, right? In fact, Susan and I had been talking about that recently in my conversation. She goes, I've got to know the magnitude. And I said, we've given the magnitude for the, through the IFC. And now we're identifying by topic. She goes, that's what I'm talking about. You've got to have more of the details that you can get into. And that's where this further study and analysis, but it isn't cheap. I will tell you that.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen.
So it's, it's wonderful to see, to see you all, especially when it's with a presentation that isn't full of red Xs. I know that, that's always, always a good sign. And I think this report really does show that F-PAC is reaching its stride. I think all of you have long, been on this committee for a long time, but this is really, truly an excellent report. So the first question I have, I think a, a lot of us have, and I will tell you, I am absolutely disgusted to learn about the bond premium. Can you quantify that for us?
We can't and.
Kevin, I think it's going to take some research, right?
I'll just say it takes working with the county because what they would do is they would then, our county finance and Joe Manduro, we do an excellent job working with them. That would be, have to really be the finance folks working with them. They've been very open and conversational with us. I think it would break it down in terms of, you know, which bonds are actually sold and when, for what purpose, and they manage the debt service, et cetera.
And why did that not come out in the IFC? Why is F-PAC bringing that to us?
Well, I think, I think, if I may speak, I think realistically in the IFC, we were looking at so many alternative ways to fund or provide or identify funding that I don't think that looking at our current existing practices necessarily, other than when we were looking at the capital and how we funded the bond, major maintenance items. And I think when we all reported out about how much we were behind, that I think everybody got just paralyzed by the magnitude of it. And I think that in that conversation, there was the hope that additional bond indebtedness of 25 million might come down the road, and then that was kind of tagged to the meals tax that failed, that the best that could be done at that time was to see if we could shift that expense to that operating piece and start it out as year-end funding, if available, that the county is now committed to funding. And then there was a portion where we were going to say that we would match something and commit to as part of the major maintenance that would take it off the bond, which really would make it be as if your capital, the 13.1.2 million that you had been funding actually increased your ability to spend on, I'll just say Kevin's projects, right? Renovation, addition, new construction capacity, whereas the major maintenance piece was then shifted over to the operational. So in essence, you did give yourself an expansion of your bond-related program. That being said, and the other ones were shift to operating, that being said, the magnitude and scope, to your point, Mr. McElveen, is, well, we really didn't address the elephant in the room. We just bit a piece at one of the legs, but we've got a long way to go to eat that whole elephant, so I don't know if that helped.
It, it does. I'll just jump in real quick on that. You know, part of our charge this year was to look at how we could increase the bond funding and, and we ended up taking a deep dive and we really wanted to understand what the county overlays were. You know, it started out initially trying to figure out how many more bonds could the county sell and still keep the AAA rating? What was the excess capacity that they weren't selling and still being able to retain the AAA rating? And then we just did a deep dive down from there and looked at every component of that whole process. And that's how we kind of said, well, what about this? So it was really just digging deep into it and trying to figure it out.
Okay, well, good. And I have one more piece. So I appreciate your advocacy on the Western High School. I think it's, it's very much akin to one of your previous advocacies, which was the nuclear option because when, once you set that off, you, you, you set off bombs throughout the county in terms of boundaries. So maybe that's, this is just a nicer way of getting at that. But, you know, Kevin, for years has been telling me that the Western High School has been blowing up his CIP, right? Maybe he's changed his tune on that, but I, you know, I, I'm yet to be convinced that that's where, where we need the most help, right? I would, you know, we look at the, the inside the belt way, we look at the, the red areas that are not really in that area. I just worry that putting it there and then the, the after effects would be so detrimental and problematic for the county that it.
Got a nice plot enticence we can have.
Right, right, well, yeah. So anyway, that's, that's my concern to be the devil's advocate on that, but thank you again for everything.
Mrs. Schultz?
So I, I guess we're all like coming at this from slightly different angles, although best F-PAC report to date, so I'm, I'm thrilled with that. The issue of seats versus space of, you know, this is the perennial issue of what really is the CIP in terms of projections and projecting accurately, which it's taken me years, but you know, you know, I'm finally simpatico with facilities and understanding how, you know, if you get the projections wrong, everything else after is wrong. But knowing where we need the space and where we have the space is, you know, is almost the perennial problem. And there are places, like, you know, I've got Centerville High School, which I think is what, 130, I don't know, 5, 38% capacity and one of the smallest campuses. And so, you know, what, where are we in the scheme of, you know, what we're looking at? Because this was very high level, but then we've got these crushing intermediary issues of, okay, well, we're not going to resolve this bond issue and maybe, and I will predict, by the way, that they're going to say that they keep the bond premium to pay for the debt service. I will bet you that that's what they're going to say. So just, just for my colleagues who are getting all their knickers in a twist, I, I hear the answer coming, which is, oh, well, we keep that because we're paying for, you know, the debt service on the bond. So there, the, the, the Western High School priority of proclaiming we've already got a property, that's all well and good for a future capacity need, which is good, we need to plan, but what, but what about the current, you know, capacity problems? And did that come up in your discussions about how to handle these ongoing persistent, you know, you have an aging building, you have aging facilities, you need to address it, you don't have enough money, and oh, by the way, short of, you know, doing the nuclear option, which is a major boundary, you know, shift, you know, Ms. Darnatt Kofax has a problem of not having enough students for the seats that she has available. I have the problem of not having enough seats for the students that I have that need to go to school. So two different problems, it's almost like there's two different CIP, you know, approaches and that there are sub-CIP approaches within the county because of where the need exists. Did you guys talk about where the need exists versus where the facility space is?
We frequently talk about that, but I don't, we, we did not, as I recall, address specifically Centerville High School as one of those issues. I'm going to ask Kevin if he's, you know, the, the CIP recommends various things that we can do with each of the schools, and so nobody knows that plan better than Kevin. So do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, after Falls Church, the next high school is Centerville. And when, when you all adopted the CIP in January, I start to take a look at what are the priorities. Obviously, the renovation queue, you know, I start to load the projects initially by their order in the renovation queue. We have a lot of meetings with F-PAC and facility staff, Jeff, and I have Centerville actually, I think, and you'll see in the next CIP, it shows up in the middle part, you know, somewhere, I'm not exactly sure, I think it may be the 23 or 25 bond. So it comes right after Falls Church. Our suggestion would be to have Centerville as a 25, 2600 student school. And I think we've had those discussions. The only thing that ever slows it down is not having adequate money. The other part of the CIP is we have multiple, where there's 49 potential boundary changes, plus we have some guidelines in there, which some are, you know, change split feeders, things of that nature. We look at programming. Each year when we talk about the CIP with you all, you help us create a priority list of those schools. And certainly there's multiple schools, including Centerville, that could benefit through some sorts of boundary changes, which is obviously a possibility.
There's no place for them to go, though.
Pardon me?
There's no place for them to go.
Yeah, you shift some around, right. But we could also, and Centerville is restricted under FAR, under zoning, so the only way to enlarge Centerville would be we'd have to have a rezoning. And that would be up to some folks who might be close to the Springfield District Supervisor to help convince him that a rezoning would be.
I don't want to, so, so I'm glad you brought, brought up, so this is, this is why this ties together with the bond, because we'll, we do things like with Rocky Run, we spend 11 and a half million dollars making Rocky Run bigger because we transport 60% of the students from outside of the boundary to Rocky Run while Liberty sits underpopulated. So I, I've got one school that's underpopulated, I'm transporting, we're spending precious CIP dollars making one school bigger, we're transporting a whole lot of kids there, and meanwhile, I've got Centerville, you know, being crushed. And so now we're talking about almost potentially doing the exact same thing. And this is why I want to have a cautionary tale going into this bond discussion on how we spend these monies, because if we just make Centerville bigger, you just, we're just creating the, the exact same problem. You know, we just, we make it bigger and then more people come and then we're out of space the second we open, you know, like, like Westfield's. So what is our renovation backlog? I knew at some point it was about, about 900 million, like close to a billion. 900 million?
I've never added it up to dollars, I just look at the year.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, so it's about, obviously, we're at 37 years right now. As we're starting to work on the CIP, you know, the costs are starting to increase now. So for a number of years, my estimates were pretty close, right on, we were moving at about 4% a year, but we're seeing a growth, cost increase of about eight. If that, I, I think that within, we'll be at 45 years by 2025 from the time a school's built that we can realistically renovate.
Hey, can we go to that table, the blue and red table? Whatever, page 11 or whatever that is? That one. So for this, for this set of data, does it amortize differently based on how the facility is used? So, and, and the reason I ask this is I don't know what the percentages are, but I would imagine that the percentages would change, like, for example, an elementary school's usage may not be the same as, you know, a high school or secondary school that has a lot more community use, athletic teams, you know, I mean, Robinson, you've got 4,000 people using that building every single day, you know, day after day, that, does the wear and tear, does this, does this change or is this like just nationally normed how this?
This is nationally norm, but you raise a good point. We're looking at that right now. We're compiling some data to show our utility usage in contrast right now, that, that you're touching on, that we showed a marked increase of community use and interestingly enough, our water consumption associated with that increase in use. And we're looking at how to recruit them.
The reason why I want this to be a, a part of, a focus of the board is the way in which our facilities are used and the cost to maintain our facilities has got to be juxtaposed to what a, a county building, you know? Think of any county building, maybe potentially other than a library that has a lot of use, but when we go to have this discussion with them on, you know, percentage of bond and, and maintenance and how far we're behind, the, a, a, a government building that's used from 8:30 in the morning till 4:30 in the afternoon, and then everybody vacates and sort of the lights go off and the place sits dim, is completely different than the wear and tear that our facilities take. And so I think that part of the argument for, for the funding and looking at the way our facility is used is, look, we're taking a much bigger hit. The, the brunt of the wear and tear in our buildings is much greater. And I think that becomes a reasonable part of the argument that we start to form in a new, whatever, you know, joint.
Ms. Schultz, just to clarify and completely with you, would you like a specific follow-up for that conversation or are you just asking if this be part of the conversation?
Yeah, yeah, let's meet somebody in an alley, no.
Would you like some data to be able to compare?
No, no, I don't think that, I think I just want to put it on the forefront of the board members' minds, that we have an ability, I think, that, and potentially if they can give us a little bit of detail to help us talk about the amortized cost and the wear and tear on our facilities is greater and makes, helps us make the argument for, for more of the money. But I am concerned about the seats versus space, where the pressure is, and that, that the high-use buildings have to continue to be a part of your conversation because that's where the squeeze is, that's where, you know, the virtual, the heat maps that I talk about. That's a problem. Those buildings, you, if you have 140%, 138% of the students that are supposed to be in a building, in a building, you're putting more wear and tear on that facility right from the start, you know, so you're, there is more pressure on those buildings and on the reprioritization. I mean, we, we keep doing the CIP queue the way we've always done it and not taking into account that things change. And a building that was, you know, at 92% capacity, that's now at 130% capacity, we have, that changes the nature of the priorities of what the board has to focus on.
Thank you. To my colleagues, I still have five people on the list, and it is 9:05, so I ask that we please be brief. I have Megan, followed by Tom, and then Sandy.
So first of all, I want to echo the compliments of the other board members. This is an excellent report and the PowerPoint especially. I really appreciate how you took out, in my mind, some of the most mission-critical points of your report. I was easily able to kind of scan it, chunk it in my brain and say, okay, I see what they're bringing to us, I see what they're recommending. You know, Dr. Braebrand, one of the things we talk about these advisory committee meetings or committees and the work they do is certainly we want staff to say, okay, this is sort of the pie in the sky, ideally what we'd like to do. Staff can look at it and say whether they think this is attainable or what's realistic and all that. But I think Dr. Braebrand said it best. Your work speaks to the fact that when you live in a county of a million people with the highest per capita of college graduates and the skill set and expertise, I mean, this is phenomenal. I think about, if we could have a few more expert committees like yours, really, I can't thank you enough for this, the incredible wealth of information you've brought on this topic, and it is one of the biggest ones we have to deal with. topic, and it is one of the biggest ones we have to deal with. I will just say that I find the chart, map three, on the projected high school capacity utilization that we're potentially facing in four years' time, very concerning. And I understand some of my colleagues saying that until we build that Western High School, you know, do we want to upset the apple cart? And boundary changes are certainly never an easy thing for our communities. But I think the board, working with FPAC and with staff and Dr. Brabran, this can't sit, I'm sorry, until the next high school gets built, because that is, you know, going to be years away. And I don't know if Mr. Plattenberg or Mr. Sneed have a projection on what this Western High School could ideally open its doors, but what school year are we talking about?
Okay, so...
The best possible scenario.
So, and Janie, Janie touched on this a little bit, because we, the area of development that we're looking at, which is right next to Hutchinson Elementary, and it's not even, I don't know if it's a mile, how far it is to frying pan road, a mile and a half. Initially, we were told there were 7,429 units. So this area is along old Centerville Road between McNair and Coats, and a little bit further south. It's called the Dulles Technology Center. Originally, the entire area was supposed to be 90% business, 10% residential. Now that the Silver Line is coming in, the developers are asking to rezone those to primarily residential. These are, these are properties that we looked at a number of years ago for both McNair and for Western High School. They wanted about $2.5 million per acre for the land, so that's not very inexpensive, I guess. And so, we were in a meeting two weeks ago, and we heard from the folks in zoning that the number was not any longer 7,429, it was north of 10,000. So if you know the area between Coats and McNair, they have primarily townhomes, or what we call two-by-two condos. Traditionally, you wouldn't have a high yield, at least out of the condominiums, but in that area, you do. I mean, that's why McNair, with a very small boundary, has 1,450 kids. So we're looking at potentially more than 10,000 of these units in an area that is very, very small. And we're quite a bit concerned. So the developers, I'm meeting with one this week to look at a piece of property. We know, just using the county yields, not our yield, but the county yield, we're looking at 1,700 elementary-age students. We have Hutchinson Elementary, which is in the north, has 1,035 students. We have 840 over at Coats and 1,450 at McNair. And we're going to add 10, at least now, it sounds like 10,000 housing units in the next, we don't know the timing of it yet, in the next few years. And so, so you see, the concern is that now, this area is bordered by Hernan to the north, Oakton, Westfield, Chantilly High Schools, which are all going to be constructed or sized at 2,500 students. That's the concern that we have. So we have this big concentration of kids that are going to come.
So, you know, I appreciate that. So I think what I heard through some of your awesome context is that it's not that we're looking to open a high school near Hutchinson four years from now.
No.
So what we are faced with is, four years from now, this is what it's going to look like. So if it's still an unknown of when the high school doors will open, I don't know that we can wait the four-plus years to say what's our game plan with some of these high schools in red. And so, so I want my colleagues, tonight, we need to have this colored map burned in our memory bank. This is going to take some real work on this board, working with FPAC and Dr. Brabran and team, because this is, this can't wait. That's my first concern. I will say that one of the key recommendations I heard you saying, and I know as board members, Dr. Brabran, we have said this a couple times, we cannot be sitting on the outside looking in with the county and its development of what's going on. The fact of the matter is, anytime the county wants to do housing development, if they sure as darn, don't have us as Siamese twins attached to their left or right arm, pick which one you want, but whatever development is going on in this county, you've got to have the school system tied right next to you if it's got residential and housing. That is shameful to hear that we could have up to 10,000, you know, residents moving in, and the impact that's going to have. So, I mean, Ms. Schultz, I was kind of surprised when Dahlia was asking you, you know, what your ask is. I'm saying to our current chair and vice chair, and whoever takes over after that...
Yet, dark alley wasn't enough.
Beating a dark alley. No, but, I mean, this, we've pussyfooted around this enough. Dr. Brabran, this is where, you know, we're going to have a new county executive, and a lot of us have good relationships with individual board members, you know, board supervisors. But I don't know what we're going to have to do to hammer home the point, this can't be ignored anymore. And, and this is very serious and very real.
I think Mr. Plattenberg has...
The only thing I wanted to say is, right, there are a lot of opportunities.
No, 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 no. Let me, let me clarify what Ms. Schultz said. I'm not talking about the Western parts of the county. That entire map, Ms. Schultz, is what I said is our problem. The entire map.
And what I wanted to just state is that that was exactly what Dr. Brabran pulled me aside and said, I've seen this, we get to get ahead of this sooner rather than later. And that was about an hour and a half ago.
Yeah, if I could just say, it's a wonderful first day to be back in Fairfax County Public Schools. I see how the timing, the swearing-in actually happened before the work session and not after.
No going back now.
But I just, no going back now, but I just want you to understand my own style as a superintendent. I walked out of this room 25 minutes ago. I said to Jeff, we need a plan, we need it ASAP. We can't wait, and I want to go to the county. I have two meetings with the county next week, and this has got to be one of the things right on the table. This is the kind of stuff that we've got to get right, right out of the gate. We've punted this down. In my experience, when I was here, this got punted, 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 and then it boils politically. It boils out in our communities, and then we come out with a less-than-satisfactory solution. So we got to get ahead of the curve, and we really got to know what's coming down the pike. And I'm confident Jeff and his team and I can work with you and FPAC and come up with a plan. But we're going to have to get started now. This can't be a last-second patch. That's not what our community wants, that's not what this board wants. And there's, there's a lot of red in there, and we're going to have to address it.
Well, and Dr. Brabran, one of the things that I, I'm looking forward to is your background in diplomacy. So we know that we're going to, we're going to need to have some tough conversations. And what we need is the diplomacy that's going to say, we need and must partner. I mean, there's no way around it. I know, Ms. Palczuk, you're trying to move this thing along. So I will just say that I fully support the recommendations. I hope you all know that I do want to still see staff reaction to the recommendations on how can we achieve them. But otherwise, I will only other, the only other points I want to emphasize, I think, are really important. Ms. Schultz, you said it best. You're looking at our, our needs and our usage in our buildings. We've also had this conversation, Dr. Brabran, before you arrived. Our square footage, our total building square footage is significantly more than 50%. But the board supervisors do a 50-50 on county bonds, school bonds. And that, that's, you know, when you talk about the fact that after 5 o'clock, county buildings are kind of quiet and shut down, ours are still going, that, that has to keep going. And then, you know, I will just point out that, look at what happened with two boundary changes at Woodson High School. We wanted to, you know, alleviate overcrowding at Fairfax, we alleviate overcrowding at Annandale, and now guess which one's going to be overcapacity the next four years. And for those of you who don't know, Mary Beth Loveglass has maintenance trucks for IT in a portion of the Woodson building, and we're going to be putting Woodson kids in trailers. So creatively speaking, Kevin and Jeff have been great, but that is something that I'm going to be coming to board members and saying, who sits in trailers? Or when we suddenly need building space back, where do we put workers? I'm not saying they have to go into trailers, but they got to get out of a building, because buildings are for instructing kids.
So, Ms. Palczuk, before we continue on, should we talk about tonight's schedule? We were just having a conversation about postponing the conversation on the principal process until September. I think Dr. Ramey has had his conversations with everyone on the board, and so they plan to go continue with the pool concept, but we still want to have a review of it. So I just wanted to discuss that with everybody now, so we can spring Dr. Ramey.
And before that, if you may, I was about to go there. Dr. Ramey, if you want to give us a comment, because you have spoken to everyone of what your takeaway was?
I think Chairperson Evans summed it up very nicely. We did have conversations last week. I appreciate all of you taking the time over the last two weeks to meet with us. We did take some of your recommendations and incorporate them into the work as we move forward. We are at a point that we do want and plan to move forward with changing this process over the next year, but if we back the work session up to gain additional, or have additional conversation with the board, I think we're still okay, because the months of August and September were really about spreading the word about this plan with individuals that would be interested in the pool process. And there was a general sense from the board that they were supportive of this, so I think we can stay on schedule and reschedule this for later in the fall.
So with that, we'll, we'll plan to add that to the work. We only have one work session in September, so we'll, we'll discuss this in chairs, but hopefully we can squeeze it in there. If not, then it would be October, but hopefully we can do it in September.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ramey. Sorry, Dr. Duran.
I would just ask that it goes first on the work session in September.
8:00 AM, just for you, Dr. Ramey. So it is 9:17, and we do have one work session left, but there's still governance after this. So I have Tom, followed by Sandy and Karen Corbett Sanders. And once again, let's try to refrain from repeating, we know that Dr. Brabran will be having a conversation and coming up with a strategic plan based on our facilities. Thank you.
Thank you, Meeting Manager Palczuk. So I guess the takeaway for me is that, since we've got Western High School on the square up there, and we're looking at a 45-year list to get the maintenance done, can we just go ahead and put it on the list now, even though it won't actually be built for, you know, an indefinite period of time? We can, just put, put Western High School on the, on the maintenance list now, since, since it could well be 50 years or something. But, but quite honestly, the, that length of time, if we are looking at 45, I mean, I assume that there's a 50-year prognosis out there as well. I mean, it's really starting to sort of, it's really starting to sound a little ridiculous. And then, and I'm not saying it's not accurate, I'm just saying that it really sort of is kind of like, well, as soon as the school's built, put it on the list, you know, so it gets in line, you know, because it's a long wait. And I don't know whether or not there's a way to relook at that. I assume that we've got a process that allows for jumping the line as needed for urgent maintenance and repairs that have to happen out of school, so. But that is really an amazing, amazing number that you guys are providing to us. And I would just echo comments of others tonight, that this was really a terrific presentation. I did, I did have one question. We received some numbers, and I, and I don't recall them off the top of my head, several months ago, about the cohorts of students going through Fairfax County. And the largest cohorts were in high school and were graduating, and the smaller cohorts were in elementary school. So is there a way to explain sort of why that may be a little bit inconsistent?
Sure, there's actually, we have two cohorts, 9th, 10th, and 11th right now, and then this, from this current year, 3rd, 4th, and 5th. The larges are the 9th, 10th, and 11th. But when we look at this group, starting with 3rd grade, as they progress up, they're large, but our 2nd, kindergarten 1st and 2nd are small. The primary reason for that is that our birth rate is declining significantly. So when we looked at the kids who were born at the beginning of this school year, so in four years now, there'll be kindergartners, there was 1,000 less births that year than five years earlier. The second factor is the fact that what we call our birth-to-kindergarten ratio, how many students are born in a particular boundary, and how many actually materialize at the school, we, we had a decline in the birth-to-kindergarten ratio. So when you look at lower birth, plus the lower percentage of the students are actually wind up in the school, you get, you get a lower number. So what we're going to see over the next few years is that, as these 3rd, 4th, 5th graders move, we're going to get a lot of pressure at our middle schools, and then ultimately, and a lot of these high schools. Now, this map doesn't reflect, you've got a number of additions and capital projects that is not reflected in this map. We have four additions plus two or three high school renovations. So there will still be a number of schools that are overcrowded, but, so when you look at our out-years, we publish, and it's in, I think it's in the CIP, but well, you can look at five years from now, you'll see that the middle of the high school has an increase, and we actually have a decrease at the elementary level.
So is, is there a comparable map that you could show, that would show the projections for those elementary schools and sort of what the occupancy are? How do those occupancy rates look then in the out-years?
Yes, sir, it's in the CIP, but we're happy to send you each of those as well.
So, so this sort of, when we look at this, I mean, I think everyone agrees that, that we see, you know, lots of schools with numbers in excess of 100%. Just for everybody that might be watching, what does it look like when you project out for elementary schools?
Well, look, obviously, it's much more favorable at the elementary level. So I believe that at five years, if you look at, because of the lower birth rate, that it almost is, it's probably a decline of about 3,000 to 4,000 elementary students in five years, if that makes sense. Yeah.
Yeah, a lot, a lot more green. Okay, so I'm going to go to a different topic, because on one of your recommendations, it had to do with some reporting on some green energy initiatives, and the metrics associated, I think specifically you mentioned synergetics or something like that, synergistics. In that first bullet with the recommendations, it says, "The latest performance metrics of the synergistic energy conservation contract at the earliest possible time." That seemed like strong language when I read it, and I wondered whether somebody could just go into that, explain it a little bit.
All we were saying is, it's been a while since you were briefed on that, and that it shouldn't come up on your schedule soon. It wasn't like, it didn't mean to portray urgency, but soon.
Perfect. I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Wilson, if I could just add to that briefly. It's one thing that Mr. Amunov has been asking for quite some time, actually. And, you know, you see all of the great work and all of the collaboration that's been done. And that's an area of opportunity, because as you know, the synergistic contract is a shared savings contract, where any cost avoidance is shared contractually that was done and vetted appropriately through our school board attorney and so forth. But to share those, in those savings. So when you look at the 14.5 roughly million since inception of the program of cost savings that have actually occurred, now, the questions are really, just to come back, report how that works. Because although we know, and we've had multiple conversations about it, our vetting process is, we use a third-party software called EnergyCap. We use to parallel that with our watchdog software on our energy consumption. We also have really a pretty amazing oversight that we initiated here as part of our internal review of any billings that would come in on those savings. So we're not paying them out. Somebody mentioned something earlier about paying them out. We're not paying them out of things that we don't achieve, okay? And so, having that further discussion, identifying and going through the metrics that we have, and what we created as part of the vetting and internal controls that we did, which, to my knowledge, it is something that's unprecedented for synergists. to my knowledge, it is something that's unprecedented for synergistic or anybody else. And not only did we do that on the facilities and transportation side, but the financial service folks came in and she killed it, an outstanding job of scrutinizing it as if we were a private vendor. And then on top of our own finance people doing that, we then had a legal counsel review that said, in fact, everything they did was Haynes. It was square. It was in order. But we haven't had that opportunity to, or taken the opportunity to, explain that at one of the FPAC meetings. We've had a lot of good conversations about a lot of different things, including, I think it was well-received, my maintenance folks, Mike Coghlan and his folks coming. There's certain, some talented members, relatively new members, who had a really good background in maintenance issues. They seemed to hit it off really well in the pre-meeting that I attended, and I know, I think it was well-received. But this is an area of opportunity that we didn't cover. So I wanted to just dissuade any concerns there may be. You know, yeah, we need to have this conversation, because it's something we need to celebrate. I mean, when we have cost avoidance of fourteen point five million, and we've got a vetting process that's really something that we created that's unprecedented, then we have an outstanding story to tell. And when you get into the Energy Star, we wouldn't have the number of facilities that we get that is the most of any school division in the country, two years in a row, that shows that your team, your maintenance folks, your youth, your principals, your teachers, your children, are operating at the twenty-five percent most efficient range of energy consumption of their peer group based upon the Environmental Protection Agency's categories. So it's an opportunity we haven't shared. I know I went into much greater detail than I should have.
No, that's okay. I mean, it sounds like it's great that it's definitely a good news story. So just that first bullet, I would like to get, as that recommendation says, a staff update to the school board on the latest performance metrics of synergistics. I think that's going to be really helpful to us, and it'd be great to have a good news story on something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. I have Sandy, Karen Corbett Sanders, and then Pat Hines.
Thank you. First of all, many of my colleagues have said, what an excellent report this is. You all have done a great job, and I'm so glad to hear that you're all staying on. So thank you for your excellent work over the years. I agree with you about specifying total needs. However, we can add that up and show that great big figure. That's something that has dogged us for a long time. We just have, you know, we're getting farther and farther behind, and not just with capacity issues, looking at that map, but the renovation issues too. And so one of the things I do have to stress, as we look at capacity issues, we don't want to slow down on our renovations. Falls Church has waited and waited and waited, and we can't slow that one down. It's the last one, last legacy school. Still no sprinklers in that school, even though we got all those kids in wheelchairs. So we can't slow that one down. And as far as streamlining the process, I think that that's probably overdue, and that's something that certainly we can take to the Planning Commission Schools Committee. I don't know if they'll feel like, I think in the past, Mr. Steen and Mr. Plattenberg, have we approached the county about that? Have we said we'd like to have first dibs at the process? And have they said no, or have we?
Yeah, we try to work real well with our county counterparts. I didn't know if you wanted to.
I've only worked here twenty-nine years, and we ask nicely, and sometimes they'll help, and other times it's a line.
And we have all worked on situations where they have worked very hard to get things through quickly.
We did, we've worked.
Bailey's Upper was a good example.
Absolutely. And, you know, we've worked in right now with Ms. Strauss's district and her corresponding supervisor member. I've got to say, we've been so fortunate to develop the relationships we have, not only with county staff. I've worked with Rob Stalls on multiple deals. I know I need to wind this up, but then Pat Harity on many conversations about Centerville High School. So there are conversations going on. They are aware of ours, but this county has a lot of issues they need to address.
But it would be good to, I know that on a case-by-case basis that can happen, it would be good if we could codify that, to say, you know, we are partners with the county. And if we could, and they know us. It's not like they have to bet what we do. They know that they're looking at people doing quality work. So I would certainly want to continue trying for that. I do, and of course, going back to the, looking at what our amount of bonds, certainly we want to squeeze out every dollar that we can and ask for a higher level. Ed Long, at one point, did raise that as a possibility, and then they rejected it. You know, they're always worried about the bond rating, which I understand. Of course, they're worried about that. I do think we need to continue to push that, though, and make our case both for a higher ceiling for us, which is critical, so we don't get farther and farther behind. When we had the Infrastructure Finance Committee, it was very difficult to have an apples-to-apples comparison with what, because they simply have a different system. We have our system of rating things, and they have theirs. And so to say, well, were they going farther faster? We believe they're going farther faster, but we, you know, had a hard time looking at that in a quantifiable way. So that's another thing for us that we might want to look at. So beyond that, I think you've done an excellent job, and you've raised a lot of issues as far as making sure we get the most out of our bond money. That's something for us to continue that conversation.
Can I just add one thing? So in case Dr. Brayband isn't aware, this number of one hundred and fifty-five million, I think, has been fixed for ten years and never been indexed to inflation.
So actually, in two thousand and five, we, in order to raise the cap, we provided some land to the county, a significant amount, nine sites. So they increased the cap. No, it's not indexed to inflation. Correct.
The other thing is that the county executive this past year, in his report, said that they looked again at whether they could raise it and determined they couldn't. That's why we're saying, let's take them some numbers and say, this is what's going on in your schools, and this is why we need it, and give them something really good to work with to justify it in their minds, too.
Go ahead, Scott.
There's what you know and there's what you don't know. All I can tell you is, in the district I was in before I came here, we did some innovation, working closely with the municipality about bond strategy and talking to the bond markets and what we can do together. And I don't know to the degree that that innovation strategy has happened, but there's some innovation strategies that actually may allow you to squeeze more capacity than what you might think. I don't know how it plays here, but I know who to contact, and I plan to reach out with Jeff and start to talk about what those ideas are. So, thank you.
Good, thank you. I have Karen Corbett Sanders and then Pat.
Thank you. You guys are incredible, and I want to thank you not only for this report, but also for the dedication and support you have exhibited by showing up at the Schools Committee of the Planning Commission and really supporting the process there, too. It's greatly appreciated, and I am optimistic that that joint or the collaborative effort there will lead to some of a more productive and collaborative approach to how we do our capital improvement plans and hopefully dealing with issues such as this. I know that the first one up is looking at proffers and how we quantify for that. One of the things that, there are a couple of areas where I was wondering if you had looked at it at all. One is in looking at opportunities for collaboration where we, I know the SKIPT has looked at wraparound schools and co-location of schools and non-school county services. And if we are serious about that, and I think we are, then we should also be looking, this is one of those innovative strategies of when we go for bonds, then is it only twenty-seventeen, twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty-one? But in twenty-eighteen, when they're looking to do some work, can we piggyback on that by offering up joint activities there?
Yeah, I'll take that. I mean, in the area that Jeff was referencing earlier, that kind of silver line corridor duelist, I mean, it's all mixed-use type product. So you're talking about retail kind of on the bottom, you know, residential above, movie theaters, things of that nature. So there's certainly the ability to incorporate schools into some of those type of traditionally commercial-type projects where students will ultimately be. So it's just a matter of.
Actually, Embark Richmond Highway has a middle school built into that multi-use facility in the Mount Vernon, when they redeveloped Mount Vernon Plaza. But they're calling for sixty-five hundred new students just along there.
So we, Mr. Snead's done an outstanding job over the years. He's already incorporated both the media center into the facility. He's got the wraparound services that you speak to. We've provided space, exterior access space to the facility, so that we could co-locate them in the communities where they're needed. We've met with the board supervisor member out in that region. She's very appreciative of the fact that it's in there, but what it really came back to was some of the other staff were concerned because they didn't have it in their budget to be able to staff that from an FTE standpoint. And we brought that to the board supervisor member's attention because she was interested in it and said she would speak to the library folks. But that being said, we've already got our design. Mr. Snead had that way in advance of all of these, and we can accommodate them at whatever level. If we can put an elementary school in a mid-rise building and have the community and the faculty and the students really come out and love it and find it a rich learning environment, we can pretty much do everything, anything we possibly can do, given the opportunity. So we can do that. We've got a plan. We've provided data. Kevin's done it with alternative school settings, with some of the unattended minors that are the ESOL, different levels, that they come in at an older age, so we can provide some accommodations. I mean, we can come up with any scheme and have done so already to meet many of those needs that we're talking about.
No, I understand that. I'm just thinking from a funding perspective. It seems like we usually shoulder the burden of not only supporting our own education needs, but allowing for excess space or for parallel use of our space.
If I could just add one comment, Karen, I'm over here.
Yeah.
As part of our shared services efforts, we are getting ready to meet with the county staff on their CIP for upcoming CIP projects, and we just met with Kevin last week. So we will be doing that as part of the shared services efforts on the CIP portion of the shared services. So we do have meetings planned with the county, and then you'll get some update in the September's joint meeting.
Excellent. That's fantastic. And then the last piece of it is, I know the staff is working on a trailer plan for getting rid of trailers, and given the capacity numbers up there, were you all brought into the discussions regarding developing a strategy to get rid of our trailers? And then, I actually have two additional, I'm sorry. And then the last piece is, do you have, you know, we see ranges from, what, eighty-four percent to a hundred and thirty percent capacity usage. What is the optimal loading? Do we have a optimal loading for high schools?
So that's a good question. With the exception of the four, what we call the four legacy high schools at this juncture, which would be West Springfield, Herndon, Falls Church, and Oakton, the remainder of the schools are designed with departmental work rooms. So those older schools just have teachers' lounges, which is a vastly different environment. And to give you an example, so when we rate a school at a hundred percent for a high school, Marshall, which was recently done, the principal there managed, they were more than two hundred kids over capacity, and they didn't require a trailer. So he pushed every room to use its full day. So I would say at the high school level, if it's a renovated or a new school, they should be pushing a hundred and ten percent before we would have serious concerns. Typically, we see middle and highs, once they start to have a lot of kids. It isn't a standard class, it's science classrooms where they have a problem. That's why, we're at, yeah, we're at Woodson right now, building some additional science labs, and we're going to have to continue to do that. At Luther Jackson, we're building labs. So frequently, the school can support standard classrooms. So I would say, for me, even the, a hundred and ten is about where we start to think about trailers at the high school level.
Good, okay, thank you. Pat, and then I have a comment, and Michelle will get thirty seconds. Time is money.
Okay, so getting back to bonds briefly, one of the things that we're told all the time is that the bond rating, the county's worried about the bond rating, and that if they, there's a ratio somehow between the bonds that they approve and other things, right? And so therefore, we're looking at static pi, and if we want any more bond funding, we have to take it from other county services, right? And so we get into that, there's, pi's not too big for everybody question. But I'm wondering, that, those, the ratio of other things, right? A lot of it is operating revenue, is that right? So as operating revenue goes up, the ability to issue more bonds goes up, or is that not the case?
Let me just point out that.
Yes, and Susan is nodding her head. When it comes to finance questions, it's probably a good idea for us to shift over and ask Kristen and Susan, especially when it comes to the bond aspects of that. I mean, Karen, definitely go ahead and respond from the FPAC perspective.
All I was going to say is that in our report last year, we had, when we had a person who understood all of that stuff on our committee, and she dug in there and said, you know, there's probably some latitude with those percentages of this and that that the county has. And Ed Long admits that there was, because he was looking at whether to increase the bonds. So there is some wiggle room. We don't, we haven't quantified it and said we could get another five million or any number like that, but we felt like there's some wiggle room that should be kind of pursued with the county. So if Susan would like to give us some, you know, more financial insight, but that's kind of where we ended up with our analysis.
There's actually multiple requirements in their ten financial principles, and one of them is a percentage of their total assessment. So if the real estate values go up, you have more capacity. And then there's another requirement that says their debt service can't be greater than a certain percentage of their operating front. So that's where they tend to bump into that capacity issue, is really with the debt service, not necessarily against the assessment requirement, against the revenue base. Because I think there is room in the revenue base, they just can't afford the debt service, and they're trying to project out ten years worth of that debt service and whether or not that passes their requirement.
Okay, thank you. All right, and my only other question I wanted to ask about was the energy savings section of the report. Thank you for looking into that. I do think it's probably time we got an update on synergistics. But, I mean, you know, the numbers that we have, the story that we have about our energy saving is very good. I mean, it's just, you know, and you've said that in the report, doing great work. I will say that, you know, at some point, you run out of road, you know, even if we're doing the best we can, you know, you get to the end of your ability to continue to find savings. And then I think, and Mr. Plattenberg knows I'm always talking about this, like, you know, at some point, we have to start thinking about turning the corner to non-fossil fuels, renewables, you know, because if we don't, then we're just kind of nibbling away at the edges of an unsustainable dependency, right? And so I was a little bit surprised that you took on energy savings as part of your work. Do you see, I mean, would it make sense for FPAC, or is it just kind of beyond, you think the scope of your work, to look at bigger picture energy? As other school systems begin to go to solar, for example, I visited Discovery Elementary in Arlington, and they are a net-zero school, and they're right next door. Now, I know that's expensive. We're not in a position now to do that. But sort of to bite off some of that, would that be interesting or useful for FPAC?
Yeah, I think it would. I think, yeah, we were coming at it from the major maintenance issues and the efficiencies and those type of things primarily, but certainly, I think we have expertise in the alternative fuels, and we can look at those type of things. we have expertise in the, in the alternative fuels, and we can look at those type of things. You know, it's, you know, what we hear from staff is it can be complicated with systems and weight and different things, but it's certainly something that I think, if we're looking long range, we absolutely should be looking at. And some of these things, I think we have geothermal at Mason Crest, which I think was a huge initial investment. I don't know if it's paying off.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so it's an excellent question that you asked, because when you think about it, you know, Get2, the number 2 green, G E T 2, the number 2, G R E N dot F C P S dot edu, is a great website that we created internally in FTS in coordination and participation with our partners that covers all of our different sustainability initiatives and goes into great length about the Echo Schools. We have so many initiatives going on in F C P S that it's just mind-blowing. And the Echo Schools program and how they get to green is tied to the instructional means and methods. It's student-led, community-driven at a local school level. But we, in addition to this, have an interdisciplinary partnership where we have the Faith Alliance, who sits at the table, and it's a perfect opportunity for us to expand and have a member of FPAC to go ahead and participate in those meetings so that if there are any other opportunities. I know by attending the Discovery Elementary School walkthrough with you, I was impressed with some things, and I was also underwhelmed with some others. And I like that because what that does is it keeps me constantly thinking. I was underwhelmed with the fact that they told me that they were not ordering to purchase any more of those solar panels, but that they were looking or a different way to finance. But I also loved how they used it for an instructional model. Mr. Sneed's been doing an outstanding job, doing solar thermal for hot water heaters, right? They reaffirmed that that is one of the most efficient investments in solar thermal. They talked about geothermal and where they put their wells along the playing fields and so forth. And they had asked Mr. Sneed, who had given him advice, not to put them under the building, which was where they were going to put the lines going to the wells, because if they ever have to maintain it or service them. You know, we're in these conversations, but I think to your point, Ms. Hines, I think it'd be a perfect opportunity to have FPAC not only be a part of that, but with the expertise that they have also to be in the conversation. And perhaps they can report back better in a way that we have yet to do.
Well, thank you. And I do, I appreciate, Mr. Plattenberg, you're coming with me that day. You made me, you continue to make me smarter about all of this and how complicated it is and how, you know, the stars really have to align for us. Because as we can see, we cannot spend one extra dollar on anything that is not classroom space. We just can't, right? It has to work. It has to pay us back almost immediately, or we can't do it. So I get that. And, you know, I would only ask if there is an opportunity for FPAC to help us all get a little bit smarter about what that future looks like.
And that needs to be part of our long-term comprehensive plan, where we're going in the more distant future as well.
Thank you. I have a couple of brief questions and comments, and thank you again. So the first one related to what Ms. Hines was saying, Get to Green, I think, is a fabulous program. And I know that we recently retired the head as well as two of the founding principals. So I don't know if FPAC had a chance to speak with Mr. Plattenberg about kind of the future vision of Get to Green. Will there be changes, or is it still kind of going in the same direction that we've been in?
Well, I'll just say that the whole, the whole Echo Schools, Get to Green, any sustainable initiative, Elaine Thollin has left to go with the county, but she said she's still going to be a part of this. Ally is still here. They are funding a position out of ISD to go ahead and pay for a replacement, a quasi-replacement, because there can never be one just like Elaine. But the partnership opportunities for the growth, you know, I think they're great, to answer your question. I really do think that there's some other broader opportunities. Many of those opportunities, I think, are for there to be more articulation of the depth and the breadth of what we're providing instructionally at the local school level that are tied to, I mean, we even have lesson plan strands that are tied on this link that are ideas and concepts for instruction teachers. So we were kicking it up a notch each year that we've been progressing through it. So absolutely, we have an opportunity to even expand it further. I don't see, you know, it's not just my vision. It's, I've said this before, it's all of our vision, and therefore, it's not just what I see, but it's what we see. And I think the "we" includes, I think, as a result of this conversation, FPAC in this, in this furtherance of the initiatives.
Right. So I guess that vision is generally at the stakeholder meetings at this?
Yes, we have the interdisciplinary, we haven't had some time. I've gotten support for Susan to move forward with this position and so forth. And, you know, we're doing really, I think the timing is right to have this conversation.
Okay, perfect. And so FPAC, I think, having a place there, as well as the school board being involved, I think, in those conversations moving forward.
By the way, I apologize, I need to say that. As school board members, you are very involved in this area. And I want to thank you for that, because whether it's trailer replacement, accountability of data, or any of the sustainable initiatives, solar, which is one that we constantly look at, wind, any of these other ideas, I mean, it only makes us better.
So to that, I mean, and I appreciate the work you've done to look at, and we bring you ideas, Jeff, and you do a very good job of vetting them and seeing, is this the best possible way to move forward? And I appreciate that. I know we have community members who are asking, is this going forward? Are we doing solar? And I know you do, you really look in-depth as to what are the costs and benefits of those projects. I think Synergistic, I would love to have the update. I think it's a very powerful public-private partnership we've had. And I know they're not easy to find in Virginia in the way we function. And so there are other areas, as we move forward, I think that would be very valuable to start to look at. Other things, we can't do ourselves, that we can find a partner that is, that is helpful. I know you are vetting some of those. To that, I had a couple of side questions as I'm hearing you talk about programmatic changes. I'm wondering, kind of throwing it out there in the future, do we want to start to look at maybe an FPAC or facilities rating system for programmatic changes? Like, you know, this is the impact it'll have, this is kind of the facility's scorecard of what that change would be, you know, so that we can kind of have that to look at at any changes in the future.
So are you asking for sort of like a template of things to consider from a facility impact assessment?
I think that would be helpful, so we can kind of systemize that analysis that I think is so powerful.
Yeah, I think you're correct. I mean, the goal of doing that analysis would be to be go-no-go kind of a thing.
Or, you know, this is kind of a maybe-go, consider this. So I think if you're able to kind of start visualizing, formalizing, these are the things to really consider, and the impact of the different portions. I think that would be really helpful, obviously, working with Dr., Mr. Plattenberg and his staff. And then finally, I was really interested, because I've had a lot of questions about yield ratios, and are yield ratios, proffer yield ratios surrounding counties. And I know you had a little bit of your background research, and perhaps I'm just asking for more of that research, because I would love to read it, especially as we look at aging facilities. I know you said Alexandria generates 0.3 students in 0 to 29-year-old high rises, and then it goes up to 0.101 in 30-plus. And if I have Tysons in my area, and I live in an older condo, and I've seen the changes, kind of, we look at the initial, we're building this, this is what the yield will be. But what's going to happen in 30 years? So I know you've all looked at that, but if you have more insight or research, and it doesn't have to be tonight, I think it's really important as we have aging, new facilities that become aging facilities, and how we look at ratios. And then how, I guess, are, do we look at our real yields and ratios, our actuals, and compare to the different ratios we're looking at? Is there a way to see those?
So a few years ago, a couple of years ago, one of our planners actually provided a presentation, which I can send to you. And then I guess at some point this year, we're happy to have Jessica and some of the other planners come back. She's very well-versed in development review and ratios. You know, we talk about this all the time. It came up a little bit earlier. When, you guys get a lot of letters from us when we talk about development, and we say how many students, that yield is not the yield that we think that the yield will be for a particular region. We have to use an average for that housing type for the whole county. Does that make sense? So...
It does. And I guess that's my other, as we have these conversations with the county, if we can provide more of that data of, these are the true yields, and these are the formulas we're looking at.
And as Ms. Evans saw, we have had multiple meetings with the county. Right now, in a couple of weeks, hopefully, we'll have another meeting where we'll discuss proffers and the yields, and that'll be a big topic of conversation for us. And Karen.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Schultz, 30 seconds.
Well, just on your, on your yields, just because they say it's going to be a yield doesn't mean it is a yield. So it's the whole showing the homework of what we say it's going to be, and then going back and showing what it is, which is my perennial argument. And the final comment I just have is, look, I understand, you know, from the conversation tonight, that this is the focus, this Western Fairfax issue, but have to stop acknowledging or stop treating one emerging five-alarm forest fire that there aren't other fires, and that other people are, you know, in danger in other areas. And that's part of the problem is we lose our focus. And why Ms. Evans is in the position she's in with Falls Church is, you know, we all raced to the one fire. And just because that's a problem, and if we are going to have 10,000 residents there, and that's why I gave a look to Ms. McLaughlin, that is a problem, but it doesn't mean that we don't have other problems. And so, you know, when I look at, you know, Centerville and Chantilly, you know, between the two, I'm down almost 1,000 students. I don't have seats for 1,000 people. So that is in and of itself as much of a problem. It's just a different kind of problem and deserves its due, whatever, consideration.
Okay, thank you. I think we had a couple of maybe follow-ups to consider, and Dr. Braybrand, because Ms. Hines wants to do that. I don't know if we have them typed up, but I had a detail, oh, here we go. The Schedule Detail Discussion of Bond premiums and Funding from the County. I think that was Ms. Strauss's follow-up. Complete Preventative Maintenance Facilities Assessment.
Why don't we provide the estimate?
You're not up.
So can we modify that to say an estimated cost and what would be included, the value?
Is that, whose was that?
Mine.
Oh, okay. You can give yourself work.
No, no, I mean...
Which board member?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, is that okay with whomever's that was?
I mean, I didn't...
No, we can't do that. Okay, how about Saf follows up and provides us what you can? I don't know who the board member was.
I'm not sure either. So I'm just wondering if that could say more explore, evaluate the facility. I think completing it, I think we need to first determine, right, we can complete it. Yeah, it's...
Mr. Plattenberg, I think I brought that up, but I think I did not quite ask for that one, because I didn't know how much that was. Because he, you know, Mr. Plattenberg, I remember said that it's expensive to do that, but I want to know how expensive that is, maybe.
Okay, the cost and...
And also, it's already been done.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Perfect. Next one. I stopped to provide an update. I think it was just an update, not necessarily an effectiveness, but...
On the metrics of the contract.
On metrics.
Just an update.
Okay. Metrics in the contract, but that's part of Synergistic. Okay, perfect. I don't know whose that was. Did I actually metrics, or are we just saying things like, how much are we...
...consumption and consumption of wood?
It's a number of different things, but what I'd like to do is, I think the intent was to have us go to FPAC and brief them, but certainly, I think board members mentioned that they were interested, too.
And I think we were looking at that versus the organic. So we weren't going to kind of look at what's still coming from the synergistic.
Right. Okay. All right, that's great, because we can do it.
Okay, thank you. Provide more data. So I think if this is mine, it was more about the yields. It's about the yields and to look at real yield data versus projected yield data on buildings, not, yeah, on actuals as the age.
Aging.
Oh.
Yeah, that was a different one.
Michelle, did you have a follow-up for just the use of buildings versus the county?
If there is, if there is anything that you guys have that you don't have to create that says, look, we have a, we have a potential argument for more of the facility's money out of the county, whether it's the operating side or the capital side, you know, bring it. I mean, you know, we need to fashion all the quivers for, arrows for our quiver.
Thank you. Do we need to quickly vote on these? Are we okay with all of these? Okay, let's take three minutes, and then we have Ms. McLaughlin is taking over for governance. Dr. Durin, it is 10 o'clock, so three quick minutes.